I'm sorry, council, I didn't hear.
They said, is there new ordinance that dogs are allowed in the mayor's office?
It's a COVID, it's a COVID thing.
It's a COVID rescue dog.
It's a therapy dog for the mayor.
Therapy for putting up with all the councilors.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so why don't we, Mr. Clark, you want?
Yep.
Come on.
It is six o'clock, so this is a meeting in the finance subcommittee. Mr. Clark, would you please call the hall?
Chairman Elliott.
Yeah.
Council Conway.
Here.
Council New.
There.
Free President.
Free President, we also have Council Drinkwater and Council Samaras who have joined us along with the city manager, the CFO, the deputy CFO. This is a follow-up meeting to a joint finance subcommittee with the school committee last week. The meeting went pretty quick, an hour, an hour went pretty quick with the number of items that we had up for discussion, so we agreed to continue to meet this week and if necessary, next week with the school committee, but we'll, I guess we'll see how, how things go. So with that, there are a number of items, if we could, if we could talk about, if you bear with me, if we could, the first item, I'd like to go to the city manager or Mr. Baldwin. If we could just pick up from the last subcommittee meeting, and I know the council did adopt or propose a 1/12 budget appropriation order. Can you walk through the calculations for the appropriation order? And maybe any other ancillary information that will be helpful, if that's okay? Are there any questions from members of the subcommittee, I think, members of the city council before we proceed here? No, okay, so Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you for having this follow-up subcommittee meeting. And just by way of background, you know, where we find ourselves right now in, because of the crisis, the COVID crisis that we're in, from a budgetary point of view, it's someplace that I don't think any, any community or state or country has been in this position before. And I say that because even from last week to this week, as we listen to the experts on Beacon Hill and those who are advising people on Beacon Hill, there hasn't been more clarity as far as what will the budget look like for coming from the state for FY21. The only information that has come to us since we last met last week is that the predictions of the state revenues falling have gotten even more serious and more grim. It went for, from about a $4.4 billion estimated loss of revenue in the next fiscal year to the state, revised to now be up to $6 billion of lost revenue. And so this is significant because for the gateway cities, and Lowell is no exception, how the state does and how it funds local aid greatly impacts our fiscal health and our fiscal well-being going forward. You know, we don't have a, a figure from the state, even a consensus revenue figure that we can, we can count on. And so as we sit here today, and this is a fluid situation, and, and that's why we, we talked about last week presenting a 1/12 budget for, for July, because we are again still awaiting more information from the Commonwealth, who I would, you know, suggest is also waiting more information from the federal government as to whether there's going to be any federal relief for states and municipalities. So, so here we are, but we need to prepare. And so I thank you, with, with your permission and that of the subcommittee, I would turn this over to the chief financial officer to walk us through the 1/12 budget prospect, what it looks like for the city, and then touch on some of the capital plan that would also like to present moving forward. So with your permission, Mr. Baldwin could, could take over.
Yep, no, thank you, Madam Manager, I, I think you framed the issue appropriately, so I think I read the same article, that the state revenue figures jumped almost, the deficit jumped almost $2 billion, and that's, that's just not good news to certainly for municipalities, in my opinion. So why don't we go right to, and which, which, given the vote last week, makes all the more sense that we adopt a budget at a level fund and keep our fingers crossed that local aid comes in somewhat, somewhat at a level fund, funded figure, so, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the, the subcommittee, and thank you, Madam Manager, for encapsulating the, the issue. What we want to talk about first with the, the subcommittee is to walk through what we're going to propose for a 1/12 budget that we intend to bring to the city council to be referred to a public hearing for June the 9th. The, what I'm gonna try to do is share my screen. Bear with me just one sec while I get this up. Can everybody see, it's a lot of information on the spreadsheet here, but is everybody able to see on my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'd just like to walk through our logic in, in arriving at the figures for each department's 1/12 appropriation. The 1/12 is somewhat of a misnomer because it's, it's more of a continuing appropriation than exactly 1/12 of the budget, however that is, where we start with the number, however, some departments, there is fluctuation or certain expenses that we need to control for, so I'm not gonna get into the detail on every single one of these, but what you're looking at here is what the council would normally see every year with the budget, the vote that is brought for approval is mirrored here, the appropriation order. Each department is listed and then each department receives two statutory categories of appropriation. There are personal services for salaries and wages, and that's encompassing of permanent salary and wages, overtime, you know, perhaps in the police department, there's court time and other types of salary and wages. And then for everything else within a department that it expends during the year, those are ordinary expenses, so repair and maintenance budget, professional services, et cetera, et cetera. So where we started was with the FY2020 recommendation that was approved by the city council. And in order to true up a proper budget for the year, we added in any supplemental appropriations from the council. There are numbers in all of these fields, but for, if the council will remember, and the subcommittee will remember, for the schools, last year, the council approved the 2020 budget for the schools, and then subsequent to approval by the council, the state budget added more Chapter 70 money, so the council voted on a supplemental appropriation for the school district in the amount of $2.9 million to mirror the, the senate's version of the budget, and so that, I have it highlighted here. That is to bring us to the amount, for example, for the school department, a single line item appropriation. For other departments like the police and fire department, the, the contracts with those collective bargaining agreements were settled within fiscal 20, and to fund some of those supplemental appropriation was approved by the council, so we've included those figures in the 1/12 amount, so that we're giving a true picture for the salaries and wages and ordinary expenses to be paid in July. We've added in a 1% escalation on each personal services line to account for the amounts in the settled collective bargaining agreements. These are contracts with the, the various municipal collect, unions that have already been approved by the council. So that brings us to column Y, our 2020 revised amount. And then we have since disseminated each of these two appropriations to the departments, and we are collecting feedback from them if there are any other extraordinary things that we need to control for in the amount that is appropriate. So if there are any of those, we've been adding them into the next column, and then dividing the whole thing by 12 to bring us to the 2021 appropriation. So for each, for each department, there will be an amount included that represents approximately 1/12 of the 2020 appropriation, save for those departments where there's a need to adjust up. So we have that currently for each one of the departments, including all of the unclassified expenses for fixed costs, such as debt service, health insurance, et cetera, et cetera, as well as the, the enterprise funds, the city's three enterprise funds, their individual personal services, ordinary expenses, and debt service. And then while these are not appropriations per se, we are including amounts for the cherry sheet assessments, those are, you know, things like charter school assessment and various other charges from the state on the cherry sheet, as well as the overlay provisions for abatements and exemptions. So that is how we are arriving at the number and at the amounts included in the appropriation order that will be brought before the council, I know that that's a lot of information, so I'll pause there for any questions that the council may have on the calculations.
Okay, I'm sure there'll be questions, I, I do have one. Mr. Baldwin, talk about the cherry sheet a little bit, what estimates did you use to FY19 cherry sheet estimate?
We have included in the amount that will be brought forth to the council, those cherry sheet charges that were in the governor's budget. So those for, for things like, bear with me one second, charter school sending, school choice, regional transit, the LRTA, RMV, non-renewal, et cetera.
I guess, I should have been more specific, in particular, the charter schools, I mean, we've seen dramatic increases from year to year, and in a given year, like, we're faced this year, that will place a significant burden on, on our revenue, so we're using last year's.
We, we are, and that, the way that the cherry sheets operate on a monthly basis is similar to a payroll check that most folks would be familiar with, they are netted against our local aid, so if our local aid amount for July is what the the state had approved for FY2020, then that amount will be less the July assessments for those, those charges that we mentioned.
Okay, and secondly, spending for the schools, that's again 1/12, which is, we're looking at last year's contribution.
That's right, and that, that amount has been, we've communicated with my counterpart on the school side, and I, I do believe that we're in agreement on that figure for the July amount to the schools.
Mr. Mayor, I know you have a meeting tomorrow night, any questions from Mr. Baldwin for relative to the 1/12, and then we'll go to members of the subcommittee.
I think I'm good, so your figure was the 14,948,596 for the month, right?
That's correct.
All right, and we still have a public hearing, so at tomorrow night's meeting, we'll set a public hearing for that amount.
I, I believe that is the case, but we have communicated with Ms. Turner that our amount and hers matches that.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Senator Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back on the last meeting, I believe we had a, a hiring freeze put into, into place. What positions, what positions would be exempt from that hiring position freeze on the, on the city side? Perhaps through you to the city manager on that?
A position, example of a position that's exempt is a position that we feel is essential, so when we put in the hiring freeze and the spending freeze, there's a committee that reviews any new posting. Jobs may be posted but not filled. An example, let me, you know, obviously, the, the head of the health department, you know, Joanne Belanger, that's an essential position, you know, Joan Keegan was serving in an interim capacity. Another likely, once the, we can see our way through this COVID situation, would be the fire chief, for instance, we have someone in interim capacity, so those types of positions, you know, there, there, there could be a, a couple of others, but, but, but for the most part, we are not filling non, not emergency situations.
Another question to you, Madam Manager, excuse me, with the, how would the, the 1/12 budget affect the union contracts, or would it affect them at all?
The 1/12 budget, counselor?
Yes.
It wouldn't affect them on our side because, under the 1/12 budget, I'll call it rules, if the contract has already been voted on and approved, as, as all of our contracts have been on the city side, then they may be accounted for in the 1/12 budget, albeit based on the FY20. So Mr. Baldwin has included those colas on July 1.
Okay, and, and one other question too, and, and perhaps we can't get into it tonight, but when we're looking at some incredible figures of 4.4 billion, and, and that's actually more like the 6, $6 billion lost revenue for the state, that's gonna trickle down, needless to say, here, to, to different cities and towns. Of the, are we working on some type of a plan at this point? I mean, assume we are, but on, if there are to be cuts made, how that might, how that might take place, or would you rather not get into that tonight?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have looked at, obviously, whatever we would have to do, but not having those figures, and I think it makes it difficult, and I think the other challenge is that, to some extent, the Commonwealth is waiting to see what type of federal stimulus monies may be coming to the state to fill, or at least partially fill the gap. So it's pretty much an unknown for, for them, and by extension for us. We are staying in constant contact, though, with our counterparts in the state, staying, you know, in, in close contact for every development. But so far, we, we haven't gotten any signal, and that's why we find ourselves.
Yeah, and I, and I thank you for that, I, and also the $6 billion, as we all know, that, that would shift to, perhaps even more as time goes on, so, I mean, these are difficult times for the, for the, for the state, country for the state, and then coming into the city, you know, it, it's a Herculean task for, for you and, and your staff to be able to plan. Basically, you're planning in the dock, and it's very difficult to do that, I, I think that, I think that we all are very cognizant of that, and hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to be able to work this through and, and, and still keep the, the services and the, and the appropriate people working for the city, and the school department too, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam Manager.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conway, Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Connors. So Connor, the 1% adjustment based on collective bargain, so what are some of the department that, that 1% apply to?
It does, three, counselor, it does apply to almost every department because it, all of the unions include very similar cost of living adjustment language in their, in their contracts, it's almost identical. So for the 17 bargaining units, they are pretty much in every department, so it is almost across the board in every department.
I see, so, you know, giving what the chairman indicated, or what Madam Manager and the chairman also indicated, that the, the loss of revenue to the state, that is for FY21, close to $6 billion. How is that's gonna impact the school, given that the school was anticipated of getting $13 million more for FY21? What, how likely, how likely are they not, are they gonna get those $13 million, given that that $6 billion loss of revenue?
Madam, I mean, I think we're gonna presume that, that's, that's a wild card.
I think it's, thank you, counselor, it's, it's, it's very difficult to say at this point, so, you know, as I mentioned, if there is an infusion of some federal, you know, relief money for the states, that could be factored in. There is certainly a commitment and an appetite in the legislature to, to honor the Student Opportunity Act. The question is, will they be able to do it in this fiscal year, or will they have to postpone the commitment? There have been no firm decisions or no public decisions made on that by the legislature, so, you know, I think many people guess that that may be a, a bridge too far to, for the legislature to, to fully fund the Student Opportunity Act as they had planned to do back in, in December and January, of January of this year. But right now, there's been no decision one way or the other as to what's gonna happen regarding Chapter 70.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, council. Anyone else at this point, let's see, who else, Council Samaras, Council Drinkwater?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Council Drinkwater?
All set at this time, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to ask you, Madam Manager, or Mr. Baldwin, given this scenario of the 1/12 factoring the 1% workforce at this point, given the variables that we're using, the workforce intact, there's no, there's no sense of a furlough or a reduction in force based upon the budget that we're putting in place, along with the hiring and hiring freeze and spending evaluations, right, so we're gonna keep our workforce intact, there's no layoffs forthcoming based upon this 1/12 scenario.
We, we, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we don't have any plan currently for that. I mean, obviously, if numbers come to us that are dramatically different, we may have to make adjustments, but as we sit here today, we don't have that as part of this initial plan. I think one of the reasons for that is we were actually finishing the third quarter of, of FY20 pretty strong before the crisis hit, so, you know, thankfully, we were in, in, in pretty strong financial shape, which has at least helped us get through, through, through this last quarter. And we're just awaiting information, it is our goal, obviously, to try and preserve jobs and, and we would, we would look to other alternatives before we look to a layoff, whether it's a furlough situation, but we have not made a firm decision on that yet, but we are watching the numbers.
Thanks, lastly, a couple of other questions. I see Counselor Chow has also joined us. I just lost my train of thought, okay, well, oh, okay, so levy increase, what was, can you refresh my memory? Levy increase last year, Mr. Baldwin, and presumably that'll be factored into this, this budget as well?
The, the FY2020 final levy was 138.3 million, which, this is, including growth, was just over 2.5%. If you take out the, the growth, new growth, it was right around that 2.5 mark, we're looking at something or had been with our full budget, something somewhere up to about 2.75, plus a very, very conservative projection for growth, obviously, once we get to setting the tax rate in the fall, had we, under normal circumstances, if the growth exceeded our estimate, we may be able to adjust that figure, but that is what we had been working on up until everything shut down.
Okay, anything else, I know we have two other subjects at 6:25, anything else on this 1/12 presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just add that, you know, again, this is a, a fluid situation, we were prepared to deliver the budget in the ordinary course, as we typically would do at this time of year. If something were to change, in other words, if the state were to come forward with some numbers that we could depend on or rely on, we'd be in a position to pivot very quickly to that budget and deliver the budget as planned, so we are, we're trying to be as nimble as possible on this, but I just wanted the council to know that, that the budget was prepared, is prepared, it just seems at this point, with the assumptions in that being uncertain, we are going to hold back until we get some more certainty from Beacon Hill.
Makes sense, Connor, you just, you wanna just run through the schedule timeframe on advertising the appropriation order and how, how we'll proceed with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we, we still intend to meet the same schedule that was formulated for the, the regular budget timeline, so with that, it means that we would bring for a So with that, it means that we would bring for a first reading the appropriation order and the loan order for capital improvements to the council for a first reading on the 26th of May. That would be likely referred to a public hearing on June the 9th, at which point the council would take action on that evening, only on the one twelfth budget. We do, as the manager alluded to, at such a time that we have a better picture of local aid, we will at that time bring the full budget book to the council and have a full presentation and discussion of the fiscal year ahead at that time.
Okay, are there questions on that? No, okay, I don't think so. So let's go to the capital budget, and I do have some questions. Could you lead off with what that, what the debt would be after adopt one for this fiscal year or maybe a couple of years out? I have to say, I'm a little bit concerned, you know, where are we going to cut, how we can, how we can be prudent? And not that we can neglect capital spending by any stretch, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the capital loan order that we intend to introduce to the council on Tuesday is a $6.77 million loan order. And within that, it's our normal course of business with the capital plan. It includes various capital improvements, several very important timely projects. And we have with that a more comprehensive financial analysis that will be part of the budget, but we will include in the packet for the council for Tuesday to be discussed. Also, at a public hearing in June, the debt service assumptions associated with that. We, last year's loan order for capital improvements was somewhere in the order of $25 million. And there were some very significant large projects that were needed to be funded. Several that come to mind right off the bat were the 911 center upgrades. That took up a large percentage of the dollar value. We've really tried to scale back on that, considering everything else, even prior to the COVID-19 onset with other capital improvements and debt service that we'll be taking on in the general fund. So we do believe that the $6.7 million is an affordable figure within the city's debt service, considering what's coming off in the next few years, as well as the council's dedication to appropriating money to the debt service stabilization fund over the last several years. The council has made contributions to that special purpose stabilization fund, and we've been able to use that accumulated sum to offset future debt service. That was our plan all along, and so we're able to benefit from that at this time.
Okay, good, I'm good. Any other questions under the subcommittee? Counselor Noon, counsel Conaway?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions, remember, Mr. Mayor? And members of the council have questions on the FY 20, FY 21 capital plan? Okay, Mr. Baldwin?
If I could, Mr. Chair, I just want to add a couple of additional details. And we can present this to the council, but just in terms of the city's debt limit, which I think is an important component of affordability for debt, considering what is on the books in terms of debt that has been issued, as well as taking into consideration what's called authorized but unissued debt. So those are loan orders that have been approved by the council, but that we have not issued debt for those projects yet. The city remains $164.7 million under the statutory debt limit, which is a calculation under the statute, 5% of equalized valuation in the town or city, of course, in our case. And so that number is about 8.2 billion in total. So 5% of that is about 409 million. And we have approximately $244.8 million in debt that is subject to the limit. So that just goes to my point of affordability.
Okay, very good. Helpful information, if you could present that to the council at the public hearing, that'd be important. Okay, so you know, for the comments, questions, why don't we move on to item number three, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was hoping just to discuss a little bit further some of the forecasting that happens this time of year that is included with the budget and will be part of the budget book. Part of that includes a grant that the city received in order to pay for some professional services associated with incorporating the COVID-19 impact onto our general fund five-year forecast. So just by way of background, the city manager maintains a five-year comprehensive financial forecast for the general fund, as well as for each of the three enterprise funds. And we have updated that, we do that on an annual basis. But one of the unknowns at this point is the impact that COVID-19 will have on our revenues. And we don't necessarily have the capacity within the existing staff to spend the time to come up with the analysis. So, but we applied for a grant through the community compact opportunity at state level, and we're awarded monies that we can use for professional services to help fine tune our forecast that we will share with the council, as well as it will be published as a best practice on statewide. And just on that same point, I'm sorry.
No, it's all good, go ahead, please continue unless there are questions from members.
On that same point, we have also updated our forecast for the water and sewer enterprises. And considering the loan orders were approved by city council last year for phase three of the water and sewer enterprise funds respective capital improvement plans, we will have rate recommendations. And they, the water and sewer enterprise fund departments have engaged some professional services already that have put together some rate modeling in order to meet the debt service associated with expenditures for that phase of the capital plan. And those are, those are critical projects, they're infrastructure projects that will help not only separate the sewer system and continue with those efforts, but also make improvements to redundant redundancy in the water system, improvements to both the water and sewer treatment facilities. And I just want to stress the importance of financing those capital projects for public health reasons.
Got it. Questions for Connor? Okay, I think we're good. 6:35, I think that was a good update. We'll bring to the council meeting on Tuesday. As the manager said, everything continues to be very fluid, but I think we have a plan and based upon. I'm sorry, I was on mute that whole time. So we'll wrap up, we'll wrap up this meeting. Thank you, everybody. I think, given the state, state of the state, that we have a plan, we put in place, and they make, as I said last week, a good strategy and any information that we get from Beacon Hill will be able to make adjustments. But I feel that we are, what the administration is taking prudent steps to keep us in a good, strong fiscal position that we have been, and then we do the best that we can with what resources we get. So, any else? Members of the subcommittee? Counselor Noon, Mr. Conaway? Counselor Conaway, no?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn by Counselor Noon, taken by Counselor Conaway. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your, for attending, and this meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.